All right, the green light's on. I'd like to officially call the City of Santa Fe Economic Development Corporation Regular Meeting. I'm sorry, it's going to be a special meeting, November 18th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. If we could, the meeting is called to order. And Devin, if we could have a roll call, please, sir?
Bob Wiley.
Here.
Vice President Schwarzen is absent. Terry O'Connell?
Here.
Brad Duffy?
Here.
Matt Crable is absent. Jason Hayes? And Gary Somerville.
Here. Thank you very much. We'll go to Adam Three on the agenda, the Agenda Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Terry is going to lead us in our prayer tonight.
Father God, thank you so much for bringing us all here this evening. Please be with us as we discuss the business that will affect our community. And also, please be with the family of Coach Ralph that passed. He was an intricate part of our community for many years and will be missed by so many. Also, guide us to make the decisions that will be right for us and our community, and bless each of our families and our businesses as we go out to do our business later this week, and be with our national and state leaders, and help them to make the decisions that will affect us positively here in Santa Fe. We ask these things in your name and for your sake. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you all very much. All right, let's go ahead and get things rolling here. I'm going to be very conscious of everyone's time tonight, so as we roll through our discussions, let's state a point if we can. I'll let you talk about anything you want to talk about, as long as it's basically the items that are pretty much covered on our, on our agenda tonight. It's not a big agenda, but we have some several very important things to talk about. Let's go to reports, Mr. Devin. First one, I ask to, everyone, I'm looking for a motion for approval of board minutes from the regular meeting, October 28th, 2025.
So moved.
Let's have a chance to read them.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion as second to approve the minutes from our regular meeting, October 28th, 25. Devin, I'd like to have a roll call vote on that if I could.
Bob Wiley?
Yes.
Terry O'Connell?
Yes.
Gary Somerville?
Here.
Brad Duffy?
Yes.
Jason Hayes.
Sir, all right, let's go to B. Mr. Devin will go into his, the current budget update, financial statement, period covering for October 2025.
So, something that we were slightly worried about on the horizon, the November sales tax numbers are in, and we are down 4.4% relative to November of last year. We're still up 10.5% where we were this time last year, but I think we're kind of at a point now where, you know, all of the new businesses are at least 12 months or older. These November payments, because of the two-month lag, were collected in September. This is right after kind of like that school supply surge that comes in August. And then, the consumer confidence is just kind of down lately, and so I think we've seen a slowing. I think we'll see a resurgence as the holidays get closer, but definitely something to keep our eye on are these sales tax numbers leveling in October and then actually declining in November. I think we'll be okay. The situation that I foresee is I don't think the EDC will see less revenue come in than we did last year, but it might not be as high as we projected. I think the projections that the Finance Director put in were 10.5% over what we made last year, and I think that might be coming down some. But we will see more this year, just not as much as we had originally anticipated. The next page is the balance for the Bear Program account. You'll see that we have two approved projects, DW Florals and Hubcap Grill. DW Florals, they're blowing and going. I was there yesterday to drop off a reimbursement check, and it was really easy to get into the store because they didn't have a front door because they were changing it out. So I'm really happy to see the progress going on there. Christina's doing a great job of coordinating that. We're real happy for DW Florals. Hubcap Grill was one that you guys just approved at the last meeting. We're working right now on getting invoices set up with the vendor and getting something on the schedule for them to come out and install the patio improvements. But outside of those two programs, we have a little under $84,000 remaining in that budget for those projects. And with the requirements that you guys adopted last month, we don't do grants any more than $50,000. And so, we have probably room for a minimum of two more projects. But the projects that we've been seeing have been going between $25,000 and $30,000, so we probably have two or three projects remaining in this budget. Again, we have the option that we had in FY '25 where if we don't spend the entirety of this budget, we'll just roll it over into next year and then increase the budget even higher than it was this year.
How many, how many Bear projects do we have in the queue? Just to guess, I don't need to?
I do. Let me cheat.
If you want to talk about in your report, I'm okay with that.
Yes, because that is the next.
Okay, let's do that. All right.
But we also have the option of raising our, if we have more than the $84,000.
Correct, we always have that option to amend our budget.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Project updates in the Executive Directors' Report, real quick. Project BW, that is, the codename is finally able to be taken off. This will be called Harvest Grove. That is a 17-acre mixed-use development. They're going to have 30,000 square feet of flex space, 17,000 square feet of retail. They're also going to have some activated green space, 50 detached townhomes. And then, there's a lot of programming and energy that's going to go into activating that green space and tying it into the retail in that area. We'll talk more about that project. I have an update for you guys in the executive session. Project Beacon Star is a new item for this, this month. It was a RFI I received from the state for a aerospace and defense company looking for 8,000 square feet to construct spacecraft components. I'm looking at eligible sites. I have one on Highway 6 that I think would be a good fit. But something that's rubbing me the wrong way that I'm waiting to hear back from is it says that this is going to be an 8,000-square-foot facility that employs 325 people, and that does not-
Oh, wow.
-make sense to me. I don't know how you fit that many people.
What it gets, unless they work shift.
Maybe they work from home?
325 employees in an 8,000-square-foot facility.
Unless they work three shifts.
Even still, that's 100 people.
In an 8,000-square-foot. Something that'd match up.
They must work from home.
Maybe. But I'm waiting, that's, that is a good idea, but I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from the state on their explanation for that jobs number.
Cool.
Because we can't park 325 people on Highway 6 between the tracks and Highway 6. But I will get an answer to you guys as soon as I hear about that one. Hopefully, that's like a typo or something, because I do think that would be a great opportunity for us. Small square foot, high-paying jobs, STEM jobs, being able to tie into the aerospace sector that's blowing up in Houston. That would be a good one if we can make it, if we can make it work.
How aggressive are they?
I don't know, because the state leads are as real coy. Sometimes they're basically, I will say candidly, sometimes they're submitting RFIs in multiple states because they'll get incentives for states competing against each other, or they won't get incentives if it's the Texas community competing against another Texas community.
I need to ask a question. How many square feet is that liquidation station that's in foreclosure now, right there on Highway 6?
That, I believe, is around 2,000. It's kind of small.
Yeah, I mean, I remember driving through it.
The old, the project that I'm wanting to pitch for this Beacon Star project is the, I think it was the Santa Fe Auto Bar, is what it was called.
Oh, right here on, okay.
It's the one that's like 4,000 square feet of warehouse and 3,000 square feet of retail office.
Right.
I think that'd be a good fit for them, if it's not that many. Project Laser Tag is one that we applied for back in August that the state has said that they've kind of gone dark. I'm leaving it on here for maybe another month or two, and I'm going to check back in, and if the state doesn't have a good answer for me, that'll probably be pulled from this list. Commercial projects, ICSC at Red River. I am, I've already booked rooms for myself, and I think the city manager or the Community Services Director might also attend. It's a two-day trade show with one day of exhibitor floor, so we'll go in on the 17th. I'm sorry, we'll go in on the 16th, we'll work the 17th, we'll come home on the 18th. But that's a great opportunity to get matched up with some of these national retailers. I'm already reviewing some of the attendees list, and there's a lot of people that I want to talk to that are going, from, you know, grocery retailers to national chain restaurants, some of the more like destination-type places like, obviously not like a Bass Pro Shop, but REI, for example, some of the more trendy kind of places. We're all set up on that. Project Dirty Pop, I'm still trying to bring in some of those niche community, I'm sorry, niche commercial developments. I did demo a retail leakage and void analysis report provided by HDL, and that'll be Item 6C in our agenda for tonight, but I think that will give us some ammo for recruiting some of those retailers. Project Peace of Mind is a new one, and I'm really excited about this one. This is a group out of Kima that reached out to me about establishing a 4,000-square-foot day spa in Santa Fe. And so, I gave them a tour of the community, and they really fell in love with Santa Fe. They've narrowed it down to three sites that they're looking at. And they didn't seem to balk at any of the prices for the properties that we looked at. It sounds like they have, they have the funding and they have the will to do something, and I think we'll, we'll see that, that one pop up pretty quickly.
There's three sites in Santa Fe?
Yes.
Wow, good.
So they'll, they'll narrow it down to one of those, but that they were able to find three places that they were excited about was great. Under Infrastructure, Senior Living Center, this one's going to come off soon. The EDC's attorney is going to send a notice of termination to NC4 Management. He is currently drafting the letter and reviewing the agreement from the Water District, just to cross our i's and dot our t's. And I'll also have an update for that in executive session. City Drainage Projects, we're going to hear a request from the city tonight. Administrative tasks, shop local campaigns, I know there's been a couple ideas floating around. I know the, the city wants the EDC and the communications specialists to put together a shop local map, so Ty and I are working on that. I know the Chamber is going to be pushing the $2 Challenge really hard. And there's some business owners that I've been talking to that are excited about the idea of maybe going in together and doing some kind of giveaway, and the city might participate on that front. I have 10 businesses right now that are all tentatively in line to donate a prize for some kind of drawing component. And so, it'll just be building the, the framework around that. Another option that's kind of come up is Mayor Pittman makes these little wooden coins, and one of the thoughts that we had was maybe designing those as a cute little Christmas ornament and selling those for $2 at local businesses. And then, that's a way to take the $2 Challenge and give like an easy thing to point to and say, you can go to Wilford's Woodworks really wants to participate in this campaign, but they're not usually a Christmas kind of retailer. But they could have those that when you're there purchasing other stuff, it's an easy way to purchase something and get entered into a drawing, for example, something like that.
Can I speak on the shop local campaign? I've talked to probably, I don't know how many, did I tell you, 20 retailers about the $2 Challenge? And I've been passing out the stickers, and the $2 Challenge was brought to us by the Galveston Daily News, and Moody Bank sponsored it. So, but I've been speaking to different businesses and passing those out. And when the city has their market on the 29th, we have a shop and stroll bus that we're trying to fill. We have seats for 28 people right now. If we don't have at least 10, we won't do it. But I have lined up the shop local people for retailers, anywhere from Morano Games to the Gun Vault to any of our retailers that sell things that may be used for Christmas gifts. And I think we have, I can't remember, maybe 12 on the list, but hopefully you have somebody that would love to get on that bus and ride around. The, the market starts at 10, we'll get on the bus at 11, and we have a schedule for where we're going to go each time. And so, hopefully, we'll have people that want to fill those seats. We're really excited about that. And that's, it's free, it doesn't cost anything. Odyssey Academy is providing the bus and the driver, and it's costing nothing for the people to do that. So, and if people want to stop and purchase gift cards like at restaurants, after the end of the thing, if they want to eat, we can do that as well. So, it's just another way to promote shopping local and raising our tax revenue.
Absolutely.
And there's, one of the items on our agenda tonight is to kind of talk about just shop local campaigns in general. And I'm basically going to, we'll, we'll get to it later, but I'm basically going to make a request for $7,500, which is a quarter of our advertising budget, as basically a way to kind of support stuff like that. So if, if you guys needed some assistance on that front, we talked about maybe printing and mailing the shop local maps.
I have the information on that.
Purchasing, purchasing the wooden coins, if we do that. I didn't want to paint us into a corner, but give us the opportunity to participate as much as we can in everything. Bear Program continues to take a long. DW Florals is making really good progress. Hubcap Grill is about to get started. Santa Fe Soap Factory, they're pretty much done with the, the, the project that we gave them the grant for. But the EDC also sponsored outside of the Bear Program, the mural that they have on the side of their building, and it's not quite complete yet. The artist that they originally contracted is no longer living in the area, and so they're trying to source a new artist to finish it, and then that's when they would like us to do our celebration. I'm also waiting to hear back from AMRS One Properties on a good date for their ribbon cutting. I had originally asked for the 21st, which was this Friday, but I haven't heard back yet. But I will stay with them and get back with you guys for your availability as soon as they get back to me. Those are kind of the ones that are active. Diamond G submitted their revised bids and revised application. But it was right after I posted the agenda for this meeting, so it was a little too late for this particular meeting. But that will come back to the Bear Committee. And then, there's a couple that I just need to really catch up on. With this kind of slowing down, this will be a good time for me to do that. Traffic cabinet painting. We did get a really good update from Tech Dot. I appreciate Seth for forwarding this to me. The new legislation from the state only really disallows public art improvements to crosswalks. It does not affect the traffic cabinets. So we still are go on that program. And I believe Lori is working through the contract with Tech Dot for the boxes at, right outside City Hall and at the intersection of 1764 and Highway 6.
She's, and we're still waiting on a response on that, too. It's, you know, we've put it in their hands, and he did tell us that he would try to expedite our application when he met with us this week, or last week.
What are we going, what's the public art going to look like? Cowboys branding a cow?
The theme for the 1764 box is the big-engine Santa Fe Railroad diesel engine.
So we're going to go, we're going to go, our city logo is going to be branded, and then we're going to do, the theme on the box is going to be?
The theme on that box is going to be the railroad, because that's kind of like a busy intersection, and that does really tie into our history. And then, we did-
You know where I'm going with this, right? So if we're going to do the brand, we're going to-
The brand will be on it.
Okay.
It's going to be on every, every box.
There we go, we're going to get you out with that theme, you know, like raining cows and stuff.
But I think in fairness though to that, we did the branding after y'all had submitted your-
Proposed picture.
Pictures, yeah. They were, they were already there after, I mean, that was, that came in later.
The theming, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, I didn't foresee the theming for any of those to ever be like really focusing on the city or EDC logo. Our, our brand will be on the, I wanted to put our brand in the, the bottom corner, the bottom of the most visible corner of-
On all of them.
Boxes, but, yeah, but like it wouldn't be the primary focus.
No, 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 no. We just want it, we just want it on there.
Recognition that we did it.
Yep.
Right. Like every artist's signature, we'll have the little Z brand at the bottom. And so, I am researching artists. There's a couple I've seen on Facebook that just did projects in League City that look really nice that I'm going to reach out to. Social media, we continue to promote local events. I did update all the branding after it was adopted last month. The incentive policy, I'm still revising. I'm going to bring that back to you guys next month for the December meeting. The website, we're still waiting for the city to migrate to their improved platform with Civic Plus. As soon as that's done, I'll be able to update the branding on our website and really start spursing it up. And the strategic plan, we have meetings coming up in January, and I know that the city manager announced the other day that he's going to be sending out forms to basically collect and compile all of the goals, objectives, wish lists for us to submit to start getting that into meetings. Do you want to expand on any of that?
We'll be sending that out to each of you as board members in the next couple of weeks for us to compile. So our strategic planning process will take place on January 8th and 9th. We will send out a firm schedule, so y'all won't be there for both days. It'll just be in a lot of time that I have you guys come in and sit during that time. We're still working through that right now, what that schedule will look like. As soon as we have it, I, I'm hoping by the December meeting, I will have that firm. But I will send you out, previous to that, your wish list, what the EDC would like to see happen, what your goals and objectives are for the next foreseeable future. And then, that way, we can start planning our budget and everything that the city does around that strategic plan.
Will our board be meeting with you and city council, or will it just kind of be our board?
It will, it will be our board and city council. So it'll be like a joint meeting like we did before, so that way, that it can everybody-
Thanks, everybody's hearing what Seth's saying.
Seth, would it be better or worse if we got all of our wish lists and reviewed them, what, what each of us said at the December meeting for us?
And you guys can do that. The only thing that I do ask is that you do it independently. I'm asking each of my city council members that and my department heads to do it independently, because I want you to have your real voice, what your, your thoughts are, not, you know, you and your neighbor. So.
Oh, good point. And then we'll meld it together, pick the, now, you might get all your ideas, but you might get some of your-
That's right, because a lot of you have a lot of the same ideas. Sometimes you have a different way of getting there, but a lot of the times, your ideas are really in alignment. So.
I like that. Thank you.
The next page are the, the update on Bear Grants, which I've kind of covered a lot of these already. The page following that is the list of meetings and events I attended. We did hold the Intro to Canva course the day after our last meeting. That went really well. I will say that Hubcap Grill was very appreciative that we held the event there. And I definitely think doing more courses like that around town at local businesses would be a benefit. Anyone has any ideas on courses, I'd love to, to coordinate a whole slew of those. I've already mentioned the meeting I had, the Famagerization Tour, or Fam Tour, that I had with the representatives of the day spa. We did have conversations, Seth and I did, with the city attorney to talk about some agreements between Project BW and the city. Seth and I also sat in conversations with the city attorney about some operational stuff with the EDC and the notice of termination for NC4 Management. Trying to think if there's anything else that was really worth highlighting. I've been putting a lot of thought into the shop local campaigns, visited a lot of businesses, visited with a lot of staff, bounced ideas off of. Especially after I kind of started hearing different individual ideas popping up, kind of cross, cross-pollinating those ideas to see if there's ways to tie all of those things together. We have our meeting tonight, and then tomorrow is Bay Heps Quarterly Prospect Review Meeting. That'll be the quarterly meeting to review Bay Heps' project pipeline. And that's a good opportunity for us to see what they have going on and see if we have any sites that fit some of the projects that are looking at the Bay Area.
You'll be attending that?
Yes, sir.
I'm attending as well.
The next page is the travel schedule that we adopted last month. Items in gray are basically stuff that's not in this fiscal year, items at the top or events that have already passed. I know that Bob, Brad, and Jason attended the TML Economic Development Conference. Bob, I don't know if you want to just touch on that?
Well, from my perspective, it was a great, it was a great gathering. Of course, that's the third one that I've attended since I've been on the EDC. And we always get it, just a, just a massive amount of information thrown at you at a very quick amount of time. And I know, even, even though I knew what was coming, it was still overwhelming. I can imagine what Brad and Jason were thinking. Holy smokes, what have I got myself into? But there was some good people that presented. Most of the people were pretty good and gave us a lot of information. A lot of stuff came out of the state. One of the high point, not the high points for me, the shocking points for me was when the lady from the Comptroller's Office told us how much money that our state has in the excess budget, $55 billion, and don't know what they're going to do with it. I got a couple suggestions for them. So, anyway, it's just amazing how much money's there. They did talk about the, the overall state of the state, and I just don't think there's a state in the United States that's got more money or more power or more growing than, than a state of Texas. It's just unbelievable when you look across the board. It's growing, it's not just growing in certain places, it's growing everywhere. I mean, West Texas is blowing up again for all kinds of different things, and it's just unbelievable. And then, you see, they had a map on people coming to Texas. And Terry, I know you've seen it before, and these guys, it's just unbelievable how many people are moving to Texas every month. So we're getting bigger and bigger. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but we are. So you just got to prepare yourself for it. So, from my point, it was good.
But did they touch on water shortage?
No, but it is definitely, they did mention a little bit about waters, a lot of water incentives coming out of the state, their will, that's coming down the road. That's the next big thing coming for everybody in the state of Texas.
When I went last year, that's, that was-
Oh, yeah, it's unbelievable. But I'd like to hear from Brad or Jason if they had any, any things that they noticed or enjoyed or didn't enjoy, or what did you think about it?
I mean, it's a pleasure to go. I think the city of Santa Fe sent us up there. It was a great opportunity. I mean, I have some questions. I have questions about our Bear Program, about some things we heard, you know, there, about how they, the guy said, if you're going to do any incentive programs like that, you shouldn't, you know, you shouldn't be giving 100% of the money. You should be, you know, I forget which guy it was who said, you know, they should hit some qualifications. They, they should be putting up some of the money. Don't give them, don't give them 100%, you know, and if they're not, you know, make sure you get your money back. You know, you can't be putting money into a failing business. I thought to myself, are we giving 100% of our money? Are we, I mean, do we have any performance requirements? So that, that's one thing I heard him say, and I was like, you know, are we doing it, are we doing it that way? are we doing it that way, or are we not doing it that way? You know, there was a lot of, you know, great things with the retail store person. That guy was pretty neat. It was great. Lot of neat people. Enjoy, enjoy, enjoy the time. There's a lot of things probably come to my mind after I leave here. I'll be like, oh, yeah, what about that one thing, or what about that thing? What about you, Brad? You, you got anything?
Yeah, it was, it was real eye-opening to see the different sized communities that were represented. And everybody, no matter how big or how small you are, everybody has issues and things that they're trying to improve on and, and move forward on. And I think it's always good to be able to, to share ideas and bounce things off of each other and, and learn from mistakes and learn from successes. So it was a really good opportunity to meet some people and hear from some of the experts in the field that, when they spoke. And I think it'll be special for us, you know, to implement some of those things going forward.
Thank you.
I learned, I mean, just like a three-eighty grant, that's new to me. You, you don't think my head's been. I mean, I already got, I'm already looking at trying to do a half a million, half a billion-dollar project with some of our properties, the DDC and Galveston give me some money. I was like, man, can I get some incentives, you know? And so now I understand a little bit more about that. You know, I, I know the city is looking to get away from that forty-two-foot-wide home development and go to sixty-five to seventy, which would put your, your home values upwards to really easily a million bucks. So at the forty-two, forty-two-foot area right now, we're at three-hundred-to-five-hundred-thousand-dollar house. I don't know how many people, what are we gonna track at three-hundred-to-five-hundred-thousand size? What type of people are we gonna track? Who's gonna keep buying, you know, who's gonna be buying that versus the, who's gonna have the infrastructure? Are we, the city's gonna be the six-hundred-and-fifty-to-million-dollar house? Is that, if I have a million dollars to spend, am I gonna go to Santa Fe? So if we put that size, if we put our restrictions on that size lots, what do we have, what's our plan? What does it look like? What retail stores? How's the traffic gonna flow? What's the stores gonna look like? All the retail. Another thing I heard him say, you should have, your EDC should have their own website. And of course, I pulled up, and I couldn't, we don't have our own website. It's part of the city's, correct?
It is part of the city's. I do want to purchase a domain name so that you can type in like santafeedc.com, it'll bring us directly to RP.
I mean, you're talking to someone that does a half a million dollars a year on, on, it's been to Google a year. I have, I own a couple hundred domains. I bought probably two, three last week, and that's something I, I mean, I'm looking right now, buying a domain for the first time for about ten grand, because it's.
You can help us with that, then.
Well, I can, I can give you, I give you some of the things I've done and don't, you know, do's and don'ts, but, yeah, there's a lot of things. I mean, another thing, density. This project that we're looking at, what's the W?
Probably BW.
That has some, it has retail and residential, right? That's, that's some new thing, more things that we need to look for, too, is having those mixed use to get more money for sales tax and, and property tax. Because the guy said a thing, he goes, renters pay more money than landowners, homestead people, you know? Renters pay more money in taxes. So my rent house in Galveston, I pay more on property taxes than I do my, I did my homestead tax. So he said renters are more valuable to a city because they pay more money in, in land taxes, so.
Lot of good stuff, lot of good stuff.
You go ahead.
I was just gonna say, if you have questions about the, the way our Bear Program is set up, we spent hours and hours and weeks and months setting it up, so you can review the Bear Program and how we came about the rules. If you review old minutes from our, our meeting.
And, and we know building it, we would be changing it.
Right, right. And we changed it several times.
More information or different information?
It's a pilot program, so.
I, I don't think I could ever come up with anything better. I'm not saying I.
It's an ever-growing process.
Yeah, it's ever-changing.
Since we started.
We've changed several times. And the other thing I was gonna say, I noticed on here, the T E D C Women's Conference in Round Rock, it just has me, but I'm not going by myself if I go Pam.
No, I was gonna ask you if Pam wanted to go, and also, they didn't have the date the last time I presented this, and they have the date now. So registration's not open yet, but I will pencil you and Pam down. And then let y'all know when registration opens, just to confirm that y'all wanna go.
All right.
Outside of that, is there anything on this list before we move ahead? Is anyone interested in any of the other events listed here?
I do have a question about the sales. Is, year over year, we're down. Is Starbucks new for this year?
Starbucks is new.
Whataburger's not, though, right?
Whataburger's no longer new.
So we went down with the additional width of Starbucks?
Anyway.
And then the hometown equipment thing, we're giving money for what?
I need to, I need to follow back up with them, because they submitted an application for exterior improvements, but they didn't submit an application, or they didn't submit any bids or any description of the work that's being done.
Are we going to require them having shrubs, maybe a sidewalk in the front to cover up all that equipment just sitting right there on Highway?
Highway six?
We can, but I mean, that's not baked into the requirements of the program, but then at that point, you're, you're adding in costs above what they wanted to do in the first place, if that makes sense.
Now, we can suggest, but we can't, we can't, we can't ask them to put that in their bid, because we think that's what it should look like.
Right.
You know? But we can suggest it.
Those are the things that we have the city, we need to.
There's no city requirement that requires them to put any of that stuff up for that kind of stuff. Good point, and I see what you're saying. It would probably look better for the shrubs than all that equipment stuck out there on the road, but then they would probably say, hey, I want people to see the equipment, I got for rent.
I need twenty thousand more to cover that up.
That's right, that's right. But no, good, good point, good point.
Yeah, but I, you know, as people that rent stuff and buy stuff, I, I Google search now. I, I don't even Google search, I Chat G P everything. I, I don't Google search anything, really, I Chat G P, so that's where we're going. So, you know, we can beautify our city and on top of everything else, I think that's, you know.
All right.
We need a beautiful city.
Good deal. So back on the training, if anybody sees anything that they're answering, go to them, please get with Devin, and let's try to get you on the list. Need our budget to do that, so I know Gary's interested. He's called, called about looking into something, so. And I hope Terry and Pam get to go to that, that women's, we, we've never sent anybody to that one before, so it'd be nice to break new ground for a different, different group of people, so good. Hope y'all get to do that.
I want to circle back to what Jason said, what he got out of that meeting up there about DDC to a hundred percent fund something. The problem is, we've already let the cow out of the barn. We've, we have funded projects, and one that y'all know I was totally against about was the signage of the gun vault, and I give it all that money. I wonder how you're gonna pull that back now? Once it's out there, it's gonna be hard. I, I think the business comes to town. I think they need to have enough horsepower to at least meet us halfway, then to fund everything a hundred percent.
Well, this is the way I look at it. Okay, maybe the horse is out of the barn, but sometimes you gotta put him back in the barn. This is, that, that's the first barn. Now, the second time, we're going, okay, we decided that looking at stuff and the amount of people are asking, maybe we gotta change that. And here, they've got a choice, either to get on, get on a board with us or get off it. They might say, well, you funded the gun vault, but you're not gonna fund mine? And we go, that was in and this is now. Things change.
One, one of the things I want to point out about that, we didn't fund the gun vault. We funded the AMRS one property. All four businesses there.
There were four businesses.
There's a misconception about that. So there's, there's four businesses there, and I just want to make sure.
Use that as an example.
I know, I just, but people have said things, well, y'all did, we, we didn't, it wasn't even the gun vault, it was the AMRS or whatever it was, so I just.
And I would say, too, that like, kind of like what Seth said, it was a pilot program, and we're kind of learning as we go. And we just come, we just adopted a set of revisions last month that kind of are, are kind of, what's the word I'm looking for? Kind of hardening it. So last month, we adopted that five-hundred-dollar application fee. So where, at minimum.
Had that before.
We've never had that before, and I mean, it's, you know, that's a drop in the bucket if we gave you fifty thousand dollars, but at least it's, you paid for five hundred of that fifty thousand dollars. And then as we get more applications and we learn more, we'll take those next steps of, kind of what you're saying is, I'd like to get to a point where the Bear Program is more of like a value-added program where it's, you know, we'd like assistance for exterior improvements. Okay, well, we'll fund twenty percent of your exterior improvements if you give us the opportunity, because they own the property, to install shrubs, sidewalks, things like that.
Pretty signage. Other than, other than shrubs and pretty signage and making exterior, that's all I even, that's all I can think about the program. Other than that, I, I have no earthly idea how to make it work and who to give the money to and what to give the money to. I, I don't. That's not, it's.
You can join that committee.
No, no. As a business person, I. Money is, is a neat thing. I've never, never experienced that. I've had a fight tooth and nail to get anything done. I'm still doing that, so, you know?
We have, just to hammer it home, we have one applicant that part of their application was, and Terry saw it, was the sixty-thousand-dollar monument sign that was, you know, a brick frame, the LED screen, and the name of the businesses that were in that little center. And it was just, you know, now that we have the fifty thousand dollar cap, that alone would exceed it. But I'd like to get to a point where we're seeing the regular pole and LED signs go for twenty grand. Maybe it's an opportunity for, if our cap is fifty thousand dollars, to say, look, I see that you're wanting to do a twenty thousand dollar sign. If you do the twenty thousand dollar sign, we'll chip in thirty thousand, and we'll get you a better sign than what you were going with originally. You know what I mean?
Why can't we put out a bid for three or four companies, sign companies, and say, hey, this is, we have this program, we have a fifty thousand dollar cap? Can you give me two, three different size signs and, and a variance of what they can look like? Give me, give me that.
All things that we, that we discussed in the Bear, in the Bear thing. And we're, we can't, as an EDC, direct the business owner who to use, because it's liable, then we're liable if something goes wrong. They, they get to choose who they want. And, and so it doesn't matter. They choose who they get bids from, we just choose the amount we give them, because we found through our attorney that we would be liable if we picked Seth's Signs Company, and then they screwed it up, and then, well, y'all picked them, it's on, it's on y'all. So we don't do any of that. We accept.
Contractors. I see where Jason's coming from.
I do, too.
What if we have?
We have templates that we could suggest to people.
Yeah, and say, hey, listen, you tell, tell them to get three bids, and this is what you got to work with. Can you get that done? You know, and, and there's, there's someone that probably can get something done in fifty grand.
Probably so. Oh, yeah. Probably so.
I'm not going in the sign business.
Well, I know, the signs are no, listen, signs are no joke. I, I don't.
Oh, no, they're very expensive.
I've skirted some different type of signs. It's expensive.
Devin?
Not a whole lot has changed in the Community Services Report. They paid the permits on the gas station shopping center going in front of Mulberry Farms, and they're just waiting on construction to start. I don't really know what the hold is there. Georgia didn't know either. Center Point continues to go as quickly as possible. From what I understand, they're expected to be in that building by this time next year. SCV is nearly done with their expansion, and I know that they have another expansion planned after that. And then kind of regional, I'm sure anybody that goes that way has seen all the work going on on two double oh four, out in Hitchcock and Lamarck. Eventually, that bridge will be closed as soon as Hitchcock is done rerouting the waterline and Tech Dot is done putting the new sidewalks that they're putting in on two double oh four. That is it for the Executive Director's Report.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's go right into six, New Business. Six eight, discuss what possible action adopting Code of Ethics and Conduct Resolution.
So as stated by the bylaws, we have adopted a Code of Ethics and Conduct, and we must annually review and reapprove every year. What I've decided to do going forward, just for us to have for our convenience, in the front folder of your binder is the bylaws, and in the back binder is the Code of Ethics. This was also included in the binder last month. But all that needs to be done tonight is a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five zero four, and I will need all of you to sign and date.
My front pocket doesn't have anything.
Here, are you making that?
What is the code here? Twenty twenty-five?
Twenty-five dash oh four.
Twenty twenty-five dash oh four. All right, so with that, I guess we're gonna need a motion.
So moved.
And a second? First and a second to adopt the Code of Ethics and Conduct Resolution twenty twenty-five oh four. Any questions about that? Basically, I think the best thing to do is everybody get with Devin and get him filled out and get him turned in, and so he can collect them and put them in the files for us every year. And this is something that we will have to do every year. Okay, all right. So I'll call for a roll call.
Bob Wiley?
Yes.
Terry O'Connell?
Yes.
Brett Murphy?
Yes.
Jason Hayes?
Yes.
Gary Zemro.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to B, discuss what possible action, request from the city of Santa Fe to fund select drainage projects.
Mr. Zep?
All right. You're gonna bring up a, a presentation real quick.
We're gonna pull this up. One, I wanted to, first, I wanted to thank each of you for approving the EDC's new logo before we get started. I wasn't at the last meeting, and I'm, I'm glad that y'all have come in with the city's branding, but I know that the city's been working with the EDC on infrastructure, and I know that y'all have one point one million roughly in your budget to go towards infrastructure projects here in the city. And so my Public Works Director, Mr. Billy Crepon, and myself have developed a list of potential projects that we would request your support and funding. And so we have eight projects that roughly come out. We're, we are believing will be around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Estimates, we will put these items out to bid, and so we will have a, a, a very strict number when we get those bids in. But we're asking for funding up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I'm gonna go ahead and jump right in. All right. So for the first project, it's at Avenue H and Fourteenth Street here in Altalama. This is a crossover culvert upgrade, and so we're looking to remove and replace seventeen by fifty of asphalt road and remove two rows of twenty-four by twenty concrete culverts and install four thirty-six by twenty-four corrugated steel pipes. and install four thirty six by twenty four corrugated steel pipes. And I'm gonna show y'all where that is if y'all will bear with me. So right here, um, and Billy, I'm gonna let you jump in if you want to and kind of explain what that process looks like.
This is one of our main crossings at Fourteenth and Avenue H. We have all the water that's coming off of Highway six in this whole area and it pools right here in this area. And once this area fills up, it backs up the whole neighborhood from thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth street. All the way over to Main Street and it holds the water back. We're wanting to increase the three sets of twenty fours to three sets of thirty sixes and then the one twenty four over there, we're wanting to increase it to thirty six inch corrugated pipe.
So each of these projects will help alleviate our, our most troubled areas in the city. And so I'm gonna continue on if y'all will bear with me. This mouse is a little finicky on here. See if it makes it better right here. All right, the next project is at Avenue, Avenue L on the west side from Ninth Street to Eleventh Street. Um, and so we put the addresses on there that the driveway culvert upgrades will take place at. So at, um, and, and I won't say the addresses, but it's basically installing the main driveway, two rows of thirty by twenty concrete culverts where right now there are twenty four inch culverts that are there. Um, and then also in their dirt driveway, removing the twenty four inch concrete culverts and replacing them with thirty inch concrete culverts. Um, and then for the address right down the street from there is, of course, removing the twenty four inch culverts and then replacing them with two rows of thirty inch culverts. And then we'll show you on the map again where that is. So right here, you can see where this will take place for this one.
Technology.
I know, technology. And I was thinking this is gonna be the coolest thing so we could all see it together. But if you see these areas right here, these culverts, and Billy, if you want to talk about them as well.
Yes, um, when you come off the Highland Ditch on the last big heavy flash flood, the Highland Ditch down there wasn't forty percent full. And we were drowning up here at the duplexes and everything and Eleventh Street was backed up. And the culverts are doubled up all the way to Ninth Street already with thirty inch culverts on the west side. So when you go from Ninth Street to Eleventh Street, there's a.
Cross only, how many driveways in there? Six?
Six driveways that need to be increased to thirty inch culverts coming all the way up to Eleventh Street. And, uh.
Can we go back to that picture, Zep? Cause I drive up and down the street a lot. That big bush there, that bush is covering over half, is that, is that pretty much infringing down into our ditch?
Yeah, it's.
Blocking a lot of stuff?
We sprayed the poison ivy in it here a couple of weeks ago and it's pretty much died.
It's died off? Okay.
You won't see that no more.
I won't see anymore? Okay. Cause it looks like it would be a restriction.
His responsibility is it to clean that out? Is it the landowners?
Well, the landowners plan them, but when it winds up to go past the telephone poles, then the city has to take care of it.
It's our responsibility. All right. All right, and then, um, right here, so continuing down Avenue L, kind of in that same fashion, removing two rows of twenty four inch concrete culverts and replacing them with thirty inch concrete culverts. Um, and for their main driveway, and then they have two dirt driveways. So removing two rows of twenty four inch concrete culverts and replacing them with two thirty inch concrete culverts. Um, so as you see, this is getting bigger and bigger to allow more water flow. Um, and then, of course, on the second driveway, they've got twenty inch culverts and making them in accordance with the rest at thirty inch.
So when you put those big culverts in, Billy, then you dig the ditch down as well?
Yeah, well, the ditch is already to that elevation.
It is, okay.
We start at Ninth Street. Well, when they reset the driveways and put in the larger culverts, we'll, we'll redo the grade.
Yeah, okay.
Cause when you get up here to Eleventh Street, the grade needs to be a little deeper.
Right.
Anyway, because all this going back down Eleventh Street.
Sediment.
Duplexes and all that, that's where the water stacks on us.
And we'll get to that in just a minute. Like to show y'all with those duplexes. And then at the end, I'm gonna show y'all our overall map so you can kind of see the, the method behind our madness. Go ahead.
I have a question. Why, why would we only go six inches? What's the reasoning for going from twenty four to thirty, not to thirty six? And how long is it, are we predicting the thirty's gonna be good enough until we have to spend money again to pay for the thirty six?
Well, there's no more development in that area. So we already have thirty inch culverts all the way up to Ninth Street.
Is we gonna match up with them?
Ninth Street to Eleventh Street is where the culverts. You can't oversize yourself if you wanted to go larger.
If you do, it'd pull up?
Yeah, it would pull up and overflow driveways and roads. And then, two, our ditch, the ditch is not big enough. It's thirty inches all it can handle, a double set of thirties.
And now they'll all be the same size.
They'll all be the same size, so it's like a straight shot.
When does the city upgrade from ditches like that we have now to more of a modern style sewer or drainage system that runs underground?
Curving gutter.
Yes, sir. When is, when did we, when will we upgrade to that? Or would that be a massive developer coming in? Would have to pay for all that stuff?
It's a massive developer comes in, has to pay for that. I mean, the city would like to upgrade to that, but it's just a very extremely high cost. Um, I mean, you see how much this, you know, potentially could be, so it would.
A good example, like you're talking about Mulberry Farms. They come in and upgrade it from the big ditch to Highland Ditch, all the way to Mulberry Farms. They have a drainage, a thirty, uh, there's a forty two inch pipe that's below the ditch that comes all the way down from Mulberry Farms. So their water does not affect the ditch water. It's underneath. And most developers like that, even Enclave, when they put it in, if you know from Ninth Street where Enclave is, they're on that side. They had to double up all those pipe to thirty inch pipe all the way down to the ditch when they develop.
So thirty is the standard and we don't go to thirty six till when?
We shouldn't have to in that area.
Okay, I got you.
Yes.
No more development there.
And then we're kind of stuck too with some of these streets where the right of way isn't wide enough for us to really.
Yeah, and that's Santa Fe, we were the county before that and you, a bunch of my road right of ways, we, any, any new developments, a sixty foot right of way for sure. We won't let you build a road without having a sixty foot right of way. But in Santa Fe right now, we have some thirty foot right of ways. We have some thirties and forties in there.
Harried it.
Correct.
Really hurt us because you can't put any more extra drainage unless you curve and gutter it where you can actually dig the ditches deeper and put culverts in there. But once you start filling in ditches like that, it's like trying to push water through a straw.
I like an open ditch better than a ditch that's completely filled in with culverts. There's no way to access it, to clean it out or anything.
Very hard to clean.
Yes.
So to continue on with drainage upgrade, at lift station fourteen, adding a second row of thirty inch concrete culverts. And then continuing down Avenue L, so where Enclave Court is, y'all know where that is, right? In Santa Fe?
It'll be on the map in a second.
Yeah, it'll be on the map. So on that dirt driveway, just replacing twenty four inch in accordance with the thirty inch, just like we did before and on the south driveway as well. Um, and then, of course, moving that, removing one row of twenty four inch concrete culverts at four three three one Avenue L and installing two rows of thirty inch culverts.
See, he's just on the opposite side of the road. You can see two driveways down where the lift station is. Enclave's already double thirties down there. You get to the lift station, that's only a single.
And go back.
Yeah, go back the other way.
Are we replacing any of those culverts?
Yes.
You're gonna go to what size?
Thirty.
Double thirties.
Double thirty. I see concrete. So we're shipping, we're cutting the concrete.
You'll start back there at the corner of that house, right there where he's got the thing, right here, the lift station.
Are you gonna allow the landowners to pay for additional fees to extend their driveways and make the driveway bigger? Are there, there, they're driving?
Well, they can if they want to and that'll be totally up to them. They can't go over thirty two foot without a clean out.
And it depends on the lot, yeah, the lot size to make sure.
You can't go over forty percent of your lot for inch.
I'd be horrified if I owned one of those houses, right? I mean, like, yes, I'd pay for the extra to get a bigger driveway.
Yes, and, well, you get a lot of people that don't want a bigger driveway. We see that a lot in Santa Fe.
Yeah, high center and you will.
But like he's saying, with the utilities that are in the ditches and everything, you can't go no larger than a double thirty. And see, when you get down to Tenth Street down there.
Yes, sir.
We really had problems when the last flash flood we had, the water, the water backed up right there and it almost got in every one of those houses from Tw- Tenth Street back to Eleventh Street. Because it's a shame we have a ditch that big, the Highland Ditch, and you can't get the water to it. You can see at the stop sign at Enclave, those are already double thirties right there. And everything going to the ditch is double thirties from there.
Enclave back to the big ditch is already double thirties.
Double thirties. So you would just pick up.
See, that was built later on. We did that later on. So we were smarter and did that.
That was part of the engineering when they put the vision in, they had to upgrade to that size.
Everything else the other way was long ago.
And continuing with project three, I know I just had to break it out in multiple slides cause there's so many to it and I wanted to give it to y'all by address. But, um, so on the east side of Enclave Court, I'm removing that, of course, that one row is y'all saw of twenty four inch and then installing two rows of thirty inch concrete culverts. Um, and then at the crossover at Tenth Street and Avenue L, adding a row of twenty four inch concrete culverts to the existing crossover. And so we'll jump to that. See, right here.
Yeah, when you get to that point right there, we have one row of twenty fours where we're gonna double up to this double twenty fours from there going towards Avenue L.
Same right here. All right. And then again, we're still in project three, there's just a lot of addresses in this area. So adding a row of twenty four inch concrete culverts to the existing crossover at forty four oh nine, at forty four eleven, adding one row of twenty four inch concrete culverts to that existing crossover at forty four fifteen. Doing the same thing, really at Avenue L, shorter distance, but for the rest of them, all doing this twenty four inch at each of those. And then we'll show you each of those on here.
You don't have, going from Tenth Street on up, you don't have the elevation in the ditch to go with thirty inch pipe up there. The ditch is not big enough. You can't, it won't handle a thirty.
Double twenty fours will make a huge, you're doubling the.
The capacity.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
The people with the gravel driveways, it just, it's just so much cheaper and easier to get those done.
That makes sense.
All right, finally to project four, this is a, you know, another crossover culvert upgrade which is on the west side of Avenue L, which is removing, um, you know, two rows of twenty four inch pipe and replacing them with thirty six inch, uh, uh, corrugated steel pipes. Um, and then on the east side, same thing, but just one row. So replacing that twenty four inch concrete culvert with another thirty six inch corrugated steel pipe. We'll show you all those.
And that's the same thing. We have all the, the water coming from the south, from Highway six, down that, both sections of Avenue L, where you see Avenue L zigzags by the duplexes. All that water comes down. It makes that curve right there and it has to come down to the big ditch from there.
Why aren't we going to corrugated steel versus concrete? Do they make concrete thirty six?
Well, I'm going to corrugated steel right there. The, the cost is no more with the corrugated steel. It's the black corrugated that's got, it's got over a hundred year lifespan. There's a sewer like main that runs down the middle of that road and that sewer main, we notice in a lot of areas, it keeps the ground damp. It'll make them concrete culverts move. And when they separate, then it, it'll make a sinkhole in the road.
Got you.
And if you go with one straight steel pipe, you don't have to worry about nothing moving or separating or anything sinking in. Most of the roads, I, I, it's been more presentable and more lifespan and everything for us if we can do it one piece. Especially where you got sewer and water too.
That will reduce your labor costs.
Yes, correct. All right, project five, this is another long one. This is on Eleventh Street and we're just doing culvert upgrades as well here. So, um, on, at twelve one twenty five, installing two rows of thirty inch concrete culverts. At twelve one thirty three, removing the two rows of twenty four inch culverts they have and replacing them with thirty inch concrete culverts. Um, and then on the Avenue L and Eleventh Street crossover, removing that existing twenty four inch culvert and then installing two rows of thirty inch concrete culverts. And then for, and we just did the duplexes together. So at, um, the twelve two oh one and twelve two oh three, Eleventh Street, removing that eighteen inch concrete culvert and then doing two rows of twenty four inch.
When he shows you a picture, we've always from right there taking off, that water has never flowed to Avenue L at all very well because of the single culverts. And we, we hold up, when you turn at Avenue L, we're catching all the water from the highway. When you turn down Avenue L from the, behind them duplexes and from the seven eleven and the trailer park, all that water funnels to Eleventh Street.
One intersection.
That right there.
Yeah, and it, it comes down Avenue L and then it comes down the other end of the duplexes. And, uh, that water is always backed up. I am sure over the last few years that them blew, all them duplexes right there, I believe, had water in them. And, uh, it's been a concern for a long time on how the water, people can't get in and out of the driveways or the houses even on these last, the tax day flood and these last few flash floods we had.
Sandbag in the front doors?
Yeah, it's been bad right through there.
And this is just a continuation of the, so all of them are going from, you know, eighteen inch to removing that one eighteen inch, going to those twenty, uh, two rows of twenty four inch concrete culverts. And then you can see them as we move along. We've had tremendous flooding right here unfortunately, but this will really help alleviate that in the future.
When he gets to that last house right there by that wooden fence, all that water on the south side, when you turn back towards Highway six, all that water just flows straight from the highway across that open property.
There's a big open field back behind those duplexes.
That water comes to these duplexes to Eleventh Street.
Flows this way.
Now, how often y'all dragging those ditches to, you know?
We have, you know, you're looking at ninety two miles of ditch, which a hundred, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty four miles. I average about sixty two to sixty three thousand cubic feet a year of digging. We dig year round.
Full-time job.
Yes, sir.
All right, so project six, um, now this is gonna be over at Avenue M and then the Highland Ditch. This is a crossover upgrade for adding two rows of thirty six inch concrete culverts to the existing culverts that are there. So we're gonna go across six.
We're right there at the county line and, uh, there's two rows underneath there already. That bar ditch wraps around and it comes down to M and a half. And then poor people on M and a half, there are several of them have flooded already through the years. And, uh, we just, we always back up right here on Avenue, you know, there's only two rows of thirties there now. And we actually need four rolls of thirty inch culverts to relieve that, all the brick homes that wrap around on Avenue M and a half. Where you have water come from the Braves baseball field that come that way too. It comes to M and a half and wraps around.
All right, and project seven, this is at Eighteenth Street and Avenue L. Um, same thing, adding two rows, but this time twenty four inch concrete culvert. So I'll jump to show y'all that. So right up there at the curve.
Right now, we have one right at the curve and when you move up about twenty foot, there is one row right there. We need additional few rolls of twenty four inch concrete culverts to relieve that that's coming up that side of Avenue L that takes care of Twentieth Street, Twenty First Street, Twenty Third Street, Twenty Fourth Street.
The way they can see where we're at.
It's gonna be right there, over here on this side. When you look at that tree line right there, that tree line is on DD one. We, they're partnering with the city. We're gonna take that tree line out all the way down to six forty six south. And we done met with the, the gas company on that pipeline. We're gonna pull that ditch back another ten foot all the way down to six forty six south so we can move that water.
That'll help a lot.
Well, we've always had problems with that whole area right there. From Avenue K, when you're halfway down Eighteenth Street, Avenue K runs back towards the south. When you get to Twentieth Street, Twenty First Street, Twenty Second Street, it has to all flow to Avenue K to Eighteenth Street right there and Avenue L does. And we had several homes that flooded in that, that area right there over the past. And it just don't have adequate flow right there at the corner. Even Mulberry Farm, uh, Mulberry, that little rug Mulberry, when you come back around.
Right.
Mulberry Street, that water comes this way too. So everything combines right there in that corner.
That'll help that apartment complex down there.
Yes.
That they're off of.
Yeah, right there off six forty six.
Forty six south, cause I know they've flooded several times there.
All right, and then the last project, this is over off Avenue T, south from Twenty Fourth Street down to the city, um, to the city, into the vicinity limits. Um, and this is, you know, doubling up the culvert and putting in twenty four inch culvert at four concrete driveways. So I'm gonna, if I can get my. Come back over. I'm sorry for the technical difficulty. That way y'all can kind of see.
What's the average cost per, per foot, linear foot on those concrete culverts? The, the, let's just say like thirty inches with, with asphalt compared to concrete?
What are you talking about? And you mean metal and the?
No, so if I have a concrete driveway and I'm replacing, uh, it to going from twenty four to thirty, thirty, what's the, uh, what's the average price?
It's by the, it sells by the foot for thirty, thirty inch culvert, thirty five dollars a foot.
No, no, that's not, I'm talking about the, the project, linear, per linear foot on the project to complete it. So if I'm doing thirty six foot and I'm adding a two thirty six, changing what, twenty fours to thirties?
Yes.
And I'm doing a thirty six driveway with concrete versus asphalt, what is the, what is price difference?
Uh, in asphalt these days, it's, it's not a whole lot of price difference because it takes about the same amount of labor to put down asphalt as it does concrete. It's a hundred, asphalt's a hundred and twenty dollars a ton by itself.
I'm sorry, the gra, you, you said gravel says a lot cheaper, I'm sorry.
Gravel, gravel is a lot cheaper.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're talking right now, gravel's only forty dollars a ton. And with the cost maintenance, you know, we don't even pour concrete driveways. We do gravel and, uh, you know, the city alone, I could set several gravel driveways at, uh, less than a, a quarter of the cost that you're pouring concrete.
But you have to replace what you take out.
That's right. If, if you don't.
That's why I was asking what the linear foot is to replace it.
Yeah, that gets sticky. If you, if you just go in there and rip somebody's concrete driveway out, you won't be able to get in this city council meeting on a Thursday. They tried that before. Yes, we own the right of way. Yes, you put your product in my right of way. But still, to be a good neighbor in the city, you can't just go out and rip out people's driveway.
What they do a lot of times, Jason, when I poured my driveway over the city right of way, I had them put in expansion joints in my concrete. So if they have to come and replace my culvert, they'll cut my expansion joint out. Now, they're still going to put concrete back, but you cut an expansion joint out, uh, concrete is a lot easier than cutting solid concrete. So most of the time, I think most of the developers that put culverts in over a road like that, they put expansion joints in to help. But the city, the city would pretty much have to put, put up, I mean, they could go back, put it, but Zeth and the guys probably wouldn't be here much longer if we did that, so.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think anything less.
Well, these, these poor people down Avenue T, we're getting all the water that's coming from off the end of 24th Street. All them open fields out there, it's cutting across the bell airs and it comes over to Avenue T. It goes down 24th Street as much as it can and then it has to go down Avenue T. And it goes down to Shed Lane and it cuts across the Cloud Bayou. The county, I done met with them, they said if I doubled my culverts up, coming all the way to the county line, and you could see their signs right there. They said they would take care of it from the county line going that away. And Drainage District does have a project with Cloud Bayou right now.
It spoke about today, Mr. Austin.
Talked about today. It's a major, major project.
It's a major project. If they get Cloud Bayou dug out all the way back up to 28th Street and 24th Street that way. Then we will, we will leave a lot of this water. But the single 24 inch culverts won't, won't carry enough water down Avenue T to take care of it.
So guys, these are the projects, the eight projects, and again, we're asking for up to 750,000. We don't know what the cost will be until we get the bids in, but that's what our, our, our best estimate is. And it's been pretty, you know, pretty liberal, so I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that the number will be less than that, kind of like the.
Warpath.
Warpath project, because I think what, what was it? Y'all thought 1.5 million, y'all were going to do four and then it was about 1.1, so run that ballpark. So, you know, I'm hoping for, for the same thing with this, but just looking at from, from pricing the best that we can. I think 750,000 would cover it. And so we would like y'all's support in funding these projects. And of course, when we get the bids back, we'll present that back to you guys, but we just wanted to get this in front of you. This is the direction that the city would like to go in, going after our biggest problem areas right now that we've identified. We hope to do, you know, a lot of projects like this in the future. But, you know, it takes a lot of money to do projects across the city, but I think all of these projects are, are pretty related. And, and it will help our drainage significantly.
Seth.
It'll put a big dent in it. It won't solve every drainage problem.
Correct.
Will these be done in chronological order? You mentioned project one through eight.
So, no, they don't, well, I'll say this, it depends on the funding. If everything is budgeted within 750,000, we'll complete all projects. But if they're not, this is in the order, in order of need, it's going one through eight. So it is prioritized, but the hope is we're going to bid each of these projects out independently, so we can have them going on simultaneously at the same time. And, and that's the big reason coming to y'all, we just don't have staff time to be able to do that. These projects would take up so much and you've heard how much our department does. So it would really help out the city and we would see fast results. This is a, would be a, a major milestone win.
Do you have a way to estimate if, let's just say, all the projects, 750,000? And then you say, okay, we're going to do all the eight projects at one time, how long that would take to do?
I can't give a time, I mean, can you give a timeline to that?
With a contractor, you're not talking three months at most.
So, so would you?
Oh, all of them.
Would you prefer when we bid them, that one contractor get all eight? Or is it possible one contractor gets one through four and another contractor gets four through eight or how, what's your thinking on that?
You know, it really, it doesn't matter to us as long as they can get the work done and have that.
And timely.
With one company or eight companies.
Here's, here's, here's my thing. There's contractors that'll bid anything, but they can't get the work done.
Correct.
Just because they say they want the work, they can't get it done.
Absolutely.
I, I like to look at it, and we went through this on the, the sewer project, I want a contractor who's going to come in there and get it done. Billy knows who those guys are. Now, it's, it, it comes down to money, I get that. But I want people, and, and I guess another thing we talk about here all the time is local. You know, I think we have some local people that might be able to do the work, get them. I prefer, you know, for us to try to help them as much as we.
You've got several contractors in this area.
Good.
You know, that, some you work with, do things like this, yes.
And we'll have a big committee look over all the bids that come in and we'll set that up and establish that committee. And that way we get that it's well-rounded vendors to come in and to do these projects for us.
I'd like to move that we allow up to $750,000 for this projects one through eight to help with the city drainage.
All right.
Nope, I was done.
We have a motion and we have a second to fund this proposed drainage project for the city up to $750,000. I appreciate Seth and, and Billy coming in and kind of showing us it's a lot of, lot of stuff, a lot of stuff that we need to do.
Well, if, if you don't get to look at it, you know, it's, it's hard to tell somebody, hey, I'm asking for this, so what are you doing?
Yeah, show me what you're doing.
Show you what you're doing. And it's good to.
Appreciate you guys putting that together. It makes it.
A lot easier.
I'm going to show me you guys, I'm telling you, this committee is the show me committee. We, things in the past, you know, we want to see what are the signs. We want to see what the signs look like.
We definitely put EDC funded these projects on.
We're doing the bidding, but we're going to, we're going to, no, I'm, I'm serious. We probably need to have, and, and we'll talk to Zeth. We probably need to have some signs built that as we're doing them, I want to see some signs out there when we're doing it. So when people drive by and they go, oh, they're tearing up a ditch, here's EDC and him paying for it. I think we need to get as much free press out of there as we can, so I know you'll work with us on that.
Get a couple angry phone calls.
Yeah, we know the companies to get that done, so.
Billy, where's the end user for all this water? Where's that ending up at?
The Virginery Canal, Cloud Bayou, there's Dickinson Bayou, you know, there's, there's really, you know, Santa Fe, you're kind of in the middle. And you're kind of surrounded by the bay. The bay is going to be your end user, but all these channels go to the, the bay is your biggest spot.
So there's no backups from what, the repairs you make, there's no backups from where you end up to the end user, right?
No.
Okay.
No, it's all city-owned property and, but city don't own it, Drainage District does.
We need to vote on this.
Yes, all right, we have a motion on the floor and a second that we spend up to $750,000 on the city's proposed drainage project. I'll call for a real call vote.
Bob Wiley?
Yes.
Terry O'Connell?
Yes.
Brad Duffy?
Yes.
Jason Hayes?
Yes.
Harry Somerville?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's go to, the next one is under new businesses E, discussed with possible action using $3,600 of EDC budget funds to purchase a sales tax and marketing analysis reporting through HDL Companies. That's under Mr. Devon.
Yes, so this opportunity was presented to me by our finance director, Rudy Zapata. He has been interested in upgrading the software that we have. Basically, long story short, the comptroller's office sends us this giant, what's called a raw file of sales tax data. So monthly connect collections, it's every taxpayer, every ID, their address, if they're a brick and mortar. Their monthly collections, year collections, blah, blah, blah. But it's all in a giant, wieldy, unorganized Excel file. And so we had a previous program through a company called LocalGov that kind of takes that and puts it into a kind of database format where we can play around with it and look up stuff. But it's not very pretty. It doesn't generate any canned reports. And so Rudy was wanting to upgrade that a little bit. So he landed on HDL Companies and they offer a much more streamlined version of that searchable database project. You can search for and build reports on specific businesses. So if we had new businesses that came in in FY '25, we could build a list and we'd be able to track that to see their performance as they come in. It also groups everything by industry, subsector, things like that. So with the sales taxes being down 4%, we could really get into the nitty gritty of, it'll break it down by retail, manufacturing, blah, blah, blah. Okay, retail is where we're getting the hit. Well, then it breaks it down even further to general retail, shopping and dining, that kind of level of detail. And then we can start to really see where our, our stragglers and our deficits are. That's all something that, that Rudy is getting through his package. On top of that, they offer a, a set of reports, which it's 50 pages, and so I printed one copy to kind of hand around. But what those 50 pages have in there are a defined market area, information on the retail trade area. And the biggest thing that I like is they have a retail leakage report. So it does break down those categories of, it's very specific. It's like, you know, automotive parts stores, full-service dining, limited service dining, fast food. But it breaks down all those revenue categories and it says, these are how much your residents are spending. This is how much they're spending in town and here's the leakage. So it very easily shows you the opportunities, kind of going back to what Jason was saying earlier about getting those businesses in here. It does start to paint that picture of, hey, you know, one of the things that, that I thought was really surprising in the demo that, you know, they're not going to give me to show you guys because it's, they want us to buy it. But those reports are for a fictional town called Prosperity, Texas. But I got to see the real reports for Santa Fe. And one of the things that was interesting is even with how well companies like Sloan and Galco Hardware are doing, there's still $6 million of leakage in building and construction materials. So even our, our, our heavy hitters, there's even an opportunity for them to maybe capture more business or bring in something that wouldn't necessarily be a competitor, but would be a compliment. But those reports kind of give us that highlight. And then also, because they're collecting this data for the entire state, they basically take those metrics and they give you a list of all those industries and then the businesses that you have in town and then the businesses that are in towns like yours. And they gave you a graded score of, hey, you've got this leakage in building supply. Here's a list of building supply companies that we think would be good fits and it's ranked high to low. So it'll be like, you know, there might be something like, trying to think of a good example because we already have Sloan. But, you know, let's say a kitchen appliance provider or a sheet rock provider. And it'll kind of grade it where it's, the smaller companies will grade higher because we don't have a huge market where Home Depot and Lowe's will grade lower because we probably don't have, we can't support a Home Depot and a Sloan, for example. But it kind of gives you that graded list. And then that kind of gives me ammo when I'm looking at some of these businesses to send them those reports and say, we have data that backs up what I'm saying about you guys being a good fit in Santa Fe. Here are some great sites that we think would be a good fit for you. And then our property search tool also is able to spit out some of the consumer expenditure, consumer expenditure data and demographic data specifically tied to those sites. So these reports are high-level summary for Santa Fe. Here's our trade area. And then I can use that to kind of get them on the hook, get them some sites and then go even further on. Here are the demographics in a one, five, 10 mile radius or 15 minute drive time. I, I think that these reports are just really a, a missing link for us and a complimentary piece to help build our retail recruiting efforts. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. So, I don't know, a few months ago, I don't remember when it was, we paid $5,000 for another program.
Yes.
And that program, when asked how much we had used that program, we paid $5,000 and we had used it like six times.
You're referring to the economic impact modeling.
Yes, right. So is, I mean, that seems like a lot of money for something that we paid for that we're not using. We also have Bayhap and we have the other program through the state where we can get these same, the same information. And so I'm wondering why we would consider spending 36, however much it is.
36 on it.
$3,600 on another program when we can already glean this information from other sources that we're already paying for.
We do not have access to the, the market analysis and the location scoring through the other programs. The $5,000 program you're referring to with the economic impact modeling is kind of a separate thing. That's something where larger projects like Project BW or if we had it at the time, we would have run the request from SCV Valve for their expansion through it, but that's more economic impact of new projects coming in or expansions. We do have another software that we're paying $4,800 a year, which is the website tools and property search tool.
Right.
Some of that data is duplicating, but that program doesn't offer the, the market analysis, which is what I'm really keen into with this. The real opportunity here is because Rudy is purchasing the sales tax piece, which we're going to get that database, we're going to get whether we do this or not.
Right.
We get a 25% discount on those reports. And so the $3,600 is reflective of the 25% discount. Normally, if we bought, purchased this on our own, it'd be $4,800. But we have the opportunity because Rudy is already purchasing this for the finance department, we have an opportunity to piggyback.
So, excuse me, Terry, and this is a once a year thing? So we could, if we elected to do it, we could do it for one year. Let's, and I'm right, I, I'm like you, Terry, if we're going to buy it, we got to use it.
Right, that's, that was my next question. How, I mean, how often, I know it's only $3,600, but that's, that's taxpayer's money. So my question is, how, how often do we feel like this will be beneficial for us?
So this is something that I would be able to send to every retailer that I'm talking to. We're, we're scheduled to go to the ICSC Red River Conference in February. Those reports will be branded with our logo and I'll be able to hand those out to every retailer I meet with. And the retailers there, I can specifically highlight them in that report and say, this is where your company was mentioned. And kind of use it to further prove my point that they'd be a good fit in Santa Fe.
Just, just to make sure I understand, so nothing that we have is going to give us this data?
Nothing that we have is going to give us the, the back half of that, which is the, the retail void analysis and the location scoring. And to me, that's the most valuable part.
So it says that Rudy is purchasing this for the city. Is it a separate part that he's going to use?
Yes, so behind the cover sheet is the, the proposal. Rudy is purchasing, or the city is purchasing the full-service sales tax administration component. And then we have the opportunity to purchase the economic development solutions component for this company.
So is this two separate programs? Like where will it live? Will it live on Rudy's computer? And then you can use it or will we, we have multiple seats and multiple users?
It's an online platform. It's unlimited users. So everyone on city staff and EDC staff can have access to the sales tax database. Because you guys are not paid staff, you won't be able to have access, but I can run reports for you guys. There are some confidentiality, confidentiality components to it that we can kind of work through on a case-by-case basis. But Rudy would purchase this stuff, whether we approve this purchase for our stuff, I would still have access to the stuff that Rudy's purchasing.
Have access to the sales tax.
Right. So, so the confidentiality, you can give that to people at the conference? You can share those, those numbers with the people at the conference, but it can't be shared with the EDC?
The confidentiality comes into play with the, the component that Rudy's buying.
Okay.
I can't tell you that Sloan made X amount of dollars in December.
Right.
I can give you a, a 12-month average, but we can't give you guys the exact.
Right.
Understand.
I'm not sure if this is the right question to ask. Where, this part of ours is costing 36. How much is the city paying for, how much is Rudy paying for his part of this?
Forty, what, 4,800? Yeah.
How much?
4,800.
4,800.
And if we chose to do it again next year, we would pay 4,800.
No, 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 it would, it's.
Ours will be 36 next, next year.
I know, but I thought we were giving a 25% discount this year.
It's 25% discount for purchasing both.
Yes, right, but I mean, so next year, yes, it would be the same.
In perpetuity.
Okay. Now, if this time next year Rudy decided that he didn't like this program anymore and we still wanted to keep it, then it would go back up to 4,800. And I will say too, when I sent the agenda item request out earlier this month, I had another item on here on the agenda from a company called Placer AI that does a lot more in-depth as far as the data goes, but doesn't really like spit out reports. But to get similar data from Placer AI was $12,000 a year. And then the Retail Coach also does similar thing, but you're also paying for his consultation. That's $28,000 a year.
Jason, do you hear what he said?
No, I'm not really understanding what this, I'm still caught up on this. I'm over here thinking about the $750,000 that we're arguing over $3,600 and we just gave away 750,000. And you shouldn't give me a cost, I, I, I still don't know where, you know, how many, how many, how many drainage ditches are we doing? What's the average cost? What, what's, how much does it cost for, you know, the drainage department to do one? What, what's, how much does it cost for, you know, drainage department to do one versus a contractor? What's the, what's the?
We don't have the manpower to do the drainage.
I get what I'm saying. What's the, what's the national average? Do we do drainage? What's the cost per linear foot? All these things that, I mean, I just don't, where are we getting 750,000? How do we know it's going to cost that much?
Well, we don't, we don't, and that's all that it is.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed that.
We haven't spent it.
But do we have, do we, is it going to be over 750? Do we know?
We don't, we don't know.
That average? I'm just curious, I, I can't vote on something that I'm not educated on.
So, the.
That's why I said, you know, I don't know anything about drainage ditches. I can make a phone call, and then someone tell me, hey, it's usually this much linear foot.
That's why they're getting bids on it. They're going to get bids on all eight of those projects. And our, our motion, my motion was to not to exceed that. So if it's over that, then there, then number one is the most important, and number eight is the least important. They're all important.
Correct.
But that, they're in order of what's the most important, and that's why they're going to.
It's our hope that it comes, you know, far below that number. If it comes at 500,000, then we are, you know, that, that's great. But we're giving a number that we, that we're asking for y'all to commit to that, and y'all approve that.
It's hard to try to be confrontational.
Yeah, but it's hard to compare our linear feet to contractors' linear feet, because being a government entity, I get a discount on material.
Yes, sir.
And they don't. And then, if the city does it, then you don't get to figure in my payroll what their payroll is, because my payroll is going to be different from a contractor's payroll.
And then on the flip side, if we hire contractors to do it, like Seth said earlier, we have the opportunity to maybe do multiple projects at the same time where Billy's crew can only do.
Billy's crew couldn't do that, yes.
Billy doesn't have a crew that's big enough to do, I mean, it'd be years to do all that.
We, we try to make six rounds a year mowing, mowing, and we try to dig all year long, and we set people's driveways, new, new house driveways and everything. And I understand what he's talking about, how much it costs to get a job done. And, you know, it's, it's never, it's never one set price. It could be, you could be, it just depends on how big the ditch is, how many culverts you're putting in, from five culverts or if you're putting in 10 culverts. If you're pouring back 10-foot of driveway, or if you're pouring back 30-foot of driveway. Every piece is.
But to give you like a run estimate, what, you know, what our cost is, maybe like 250,000 for just the actual materials, and then so you've got to put in labor, you know, on top of that, and that's with a, you know, reduced price on our end. So.
I was, I just did a quick number, 750, if we do 30 of them, that's average $25,000.
And, and just so that we're all on the same page, all we did tonight was basically provide a budget for the city to explore. We haven't actually committed to spending $750,000 yet.
That's right.
Point of order, I'll call for the question.
Yep. All right. So let's, let's drop back to the, let's drop back to the, well, the one that we were on about. Our director's request to spend $3,600 on this program that will be tied to the city's program that Rudy's buying for his, so they're, they'll piggyback off each other and give a, give Devin some numbers that he needs when he goes and talks to people about some different things. Any further discussion about that for Devin? If not, I'll call for a question.
Well, if Devin feels that strong about it, and it sounds good to me, it sounds like it's more focused on our city, I, I give a motion to go with it.
All right. I have a motion to spend the $3,600. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jason seconded it. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Bob Wiley?
Yes.
Terry O'Connell?
Yes.
Brad Duffy?
Yes.
Jason Hayes?
Yes.
Gary Semenbaum?
Yes.
Both passes. Thank you. All right. So let's go to the next one. We're going to go into, discuss with possible action, EDC budget funds to participate in joint, in the joint local, shop local campaign for the city of Santa Fe in conjunction with the city and the Chamber of Commerce. So Devin, you want to tell us about that?
Yes. So, basically, building off of kind of what I mentioned towards the beginning of the meeting, tying some of these things together. So, in October, I reported that sales taxes were leveling, and then November, sales taxes are actually down 4%. In response to this, I think it is really important to develop some shop local campaigns going into the holiday season. Everyone kind of has their own ideas that are bubbling up right now. We have $30,000 in our advertising budget. I'd like to request basically an allowance of up to $7,500 to participate in any of the shop local campaigns going on. I didn't want to necessarily tie the figure to a specific initiative, if there's a way to kind of spread it out and have multiple successful options. But if we were to go all-in-one, for example, $7,500 is enough to develop a shop local map and mail it to all of the residents of the city of Santa Fe. There's a, you know, a constraint to that as far as timing and utility. Other options would be to purchase, to print the maps and distribute them to local businesses. There's the opportunity to purchase the $2 ornaments to help tie with the $2 challenge. There's, there would be a minimal, some minimal expenses for printing to get entry forms and marketing materials put together for the prize basket giveaway that some of the local businesses are kind of putting together. And so really, I'm just kind of asking for the leeway to kind of chip in where I can to help all of these shop local campaigns succeed where possible.
I was just going to say that Pam got with the post office about the possibility of the mailing, and it's just, it's not cost-effective to mail. An envelope is out of the question, and the mailers that you get, and I have them in the car and I forgot to bring them in, but the mailers you get from different political entities, the shiny, like.
Hard card stock.
Yeah, hard card, cards, hard card stock. Again, people are much more apt to pick up the map from a local business. They have a map in Galveston that is produced by a woman who makes her living by selling on, on that map. I'm not asking for anybody to sell anything. But after Pam researched it with the post office, it was just not economically feasible. I mean, we have the money, yeah, if we want to blow it, but nine times out of 10, people grab that stuff out of their mailbox and it gets trashed immediately without they, without ever looking at it. So, I did want to mention that she did research that with, with the postal service, and it just, just wasn't feasible as far as a mail-out.
That makes sense. And I think too, that just, if we have the maps at the businesses, the people that would have kept the map that we mailed them will take them, and the people that wouldn't have kept the map?
They're not going to pick it up anyway.
They're not going to pick it up and throw it away.
We're probably not going to fill up the trash cans. If you're going to take the map and use it, you'll take it. If not, it's, we don't. We'll probably have to print a lot less of them too.
When would the map be ready?
I would like for everything that I'm working on to be done in time to be rolled out on November 29th, which is Shop Small Saturday. It'll tie into what the city's doing with the Christmas market, it'll tie into what you guys are doing with the shopping stroll. And I'd like to tie everything together where possible. So, if you give me the list of businesses that are participating in the shopping stroll, I'll get with tie, and maybe we can even make just a little mini-map just for that day, just so that those businesses also feel like there was something that they were recognized. And if we have all the other materials done in time, I'd like to have QR codes in there where maybe on that mini-map, there's a link to the full map, there's a link to the $2 challenge, the prize giveaway, literally anything else that's going on.
I even had somebody mention, we, we're not going to allow children on the bus, because then I would have to have permission forms or whatever. But had somebody mentioned, could we follow the bus in our car? I don't care. Come on. The more the merrier. So.
When is the shopping sale? What time, what's the daytime? Is it daytime? What day?
Yes, the 29th. The, the city's having their market starting at 10:00, and we will get on the bus at 11:00. And then, I have, I have it mapped out. There's only one business I haven't spoken to, because I'm trying to make sure I have at least 10 people. If I don't have 10 people, we're not going to do it. But I hope that after today, I will have at least 10 people signed up. We have seats for up to 28 people.
Well, this is great. I think, I think you should do this. You're looking at trying to get it out to the customers. Can we do a Facebook ad? The people that will go to this, can y'all do a Facebook ad? Maybe put a QR code up on some signs. I don't know how that will, that will do. But, you know, I was thinking with this little thing, maybe if you could do a little contest, like a prize and have an entry form, entry, so every business you visit is one entry, every dollar amount is another entry, and then at the end, all your entries go into a pile, and they do a raffle and win a prize, something, something to.
That's not, I mean, that's not a part of our thing, but, I mean, it's a great idea.
No, no, okay, yeah.
We're providing the bus, and I'm providing the bus and the driver and the gas. It's not costing anybody anything to get on the bus, and we just want, I can tell you that this past weekend, I went to six places, five, and videoed those places and talked about the $2 challenge and whatever. And one of the businesses texted me and said, we've never had this much business before. Thank you. Because I brought them from the ribbon-cutting, people from there, that didn't even know this business existed. And that's one of our problems here in Santa Fe. People don't know about the hidden gems that we have here to offer. And part of our, part of our leadership program with Leadership Santa Fe, which is tomorrow, they will go to all of the financial institutions in Santa Fe and visit the financial institutions and the castle, because they can't do that in December. So, anyway, it's just another way that we are partnering with all of our, our, our local financial institutions and, and talking about, you know, the things that they have to offer.
I think it's great. I can't wait to see the map, because there's a lot of places I know I don't, I don't have a clue. Only thing I know is still Red Cat. And then, then that, sub-shop.
The city and the EDC are, we're doing the map regardless. We're just talking about how we're going to distribute it?
Yes.
And the cost, the total, the $7,500, how much of that would need to go, if you can guesstimate, to the creation of the map?
Zero, because we're doing that in-house.
Okay. So really, the $7,500 is just about the other items you talked about.
Right.
And if we don't do the mailing, it can go, it can be spread out over all of those things.
Right. And honestly, if we don't, if we're not going to do the mailing, it's probably not going to be even close to that $7,500. But I wanted to ask for that at least tonight, because I know that was one of the options that was being discussed.
And that, and that $30,000 is the same pot that we go and get signs made and put in the yards when we're doing the culverts or whatever. So, I mean, the money's, the money's there.
Yes. But I have no intention of spending anywhere close to $7,500 if I can avoid it. Jason made a great point about Facebook ads. We can market the shop local campaign. You can post that post about the, the campaign specifically targeted to, to young families, and it's $250 for a month.
Yeah.
And that'll go a lot further than just Santa Fe.
Yeah. And we're, and we're working diligently with these, these groups. For instance, Eagle Buildings, he said, you know, I can't sell you a building for $2, but I can sell it to you for $2 over invoice. So there's all different kinds of ways. We spoke with Victorious Living about, they don't sell anything there, but they're assisted living. And we said, come, we have a local business that's going to go there and sell things to them because their people can't get out. And I said, go buy some $2 worth of cookies and take it to Victorious. So there's all kinds of ways for our businesses to participate, even if you don't sell something.
Right.
And so, we're just trying to keep our dollars here in Santa Fe.
Is that program open to all businesses or just chamber businesses?
Um, it's ideally for chamber businesses. One of the businesses on the, on there, it's told me on Saturday, after they did more business than they've ever done before, that they were going to join this week. They have not yet. But since it's a chamber, every single one of these places is a, a retail business, and they're all chamber investors already. Except for one, and like I said, they.
They're probably going to join.
They're probably going to join.
Our things though, I mean, they're open to all businesses.
Yes, they're open to all businesses.
I just want to make that.
Right, right.
For all businesses.
Every single business.
I just want to make sure.
Right.
And I think one of the real opportunities for stuff like this is for the EDC and the chamber to kind of partner on things like this to where, you know, I, I know you guys are very busy kind of making sure that your members are happy, but if there's a, if there's a way for the EDC to incorporate a business that sees the value of us working together and then joins the chamber afterwards, you know what I mean? Being able to take advantage of that.
The EDC. Being the chamber work hand-in-hand to promote our city.
Right.
And to promote our, everything that we have to offer here.
But if the chamber is going around with our shop local map with non-chamber members' businesses on it, that's only going to look good for the chamber.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's what I'm saying. All right. Any more questions on Mr. Devin's request for the $7,500 to, for this project?
I think that I need to abstain from this, because I am the chair of the Chamber of Commerce. And so I don't think it would be fair for me to vote on this.
I appreciate that.
So.
You would like to make the motion, Mr. Brady?
Yeah, I make a motion. I make a motion that we accept this proposal and move it forward.
All right. And we got a first and a second. Mr. Brad made the motion. Mr. Jason made the second. If there's no more questions for Mr. Devin, I'll call for the question. Roll call, please.
Bob Wiley?
Yes.
Brad Duffy?
Yes.
Jason Hayes?
Yes.
Gary Semenbaum?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So, let's move to E. Executive session under section, I forgot what the question's on tonight, 55.1.087 of the Texas Government Code, the government body can conduct a closed meeting to deliberate the offer of financial or other incentive business prospects. So, basically what we'll do, Brad and Jason, we're going to go into executive session. And I think the, the city manager's got some things he wants to talk to us about, about one of the projects that the city's working on, that we're going to be kind of working with him on that and give us some details.
So we are going to.
To the conference room.
All right. So we're going to go into executive, executive session at 8:43. All right. So we're going to go into Execu- Executive Session at 8:43. All right.
All right, so we are back from the executive session. It is now 9:31. There was a F., take possible action on matters discussed in the executive session. There will be no action taken. It was purely a discussion with the city manager. So then we'll go right into number seven, citizen comments and announcements.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
So on November 20th, Friends of the Library will meet at 2:00 p.m. for their monthly meeting. Costs $5 to join, and it's a wonderful group. I hope that people will join us there. And it's at the May Bruce Library. On the 29th, the Santa Fe Lions Club at the fire station will have a pancake breakfast. It costs $5 for pancakes, or a unwrapped toy that will be donated to his ministries. So that's an important thing that's happening at Santa Fe Fire and Rescue at 8:00 a.m. on the 29th. On December 3rd, the Christmas tree lighting is happening at the library. That's the city doing the Christmas tree lighting on December 3rd at 5:30 in the evening. There'll be lots of entertainment. It'll be a great time. Also, December 6th is the Christmas parade. You can find out more information from the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce Christmas party is on December 9th, and that's going to be at the Hidden Palms. And then December 10th is the next Chamber of Commerce luncheon. And our Historical Society will be there talking about the things they do, and that's going to be at our December 10th luncheon at the Hidden Palms. And last of all, if you have a group, or an individual, or anybody that wants to ring the bell for the Galveston County Salvation Army, go to registertoring.org and sign up. There's a rumor that we may even be getting a kettle back in Santa Fe again. So please go to registertoring.org and sign up to help the Salvation Army. Ring the bell.
November 29th is Shop Small Saturday, which is why we're doing the Christmas market and the shopping stroll and things like that. Really quickly, the benefits of shopping local is for every dollar you spend in the community, 67 cents stays in the community. But if there's just something that you can't find in town, or, you know, I understand that some HEBs are better than other, or there's other places that people like to shop. If you do a curbside order at the Bay Colony HEB, for example, because you purchased it online, the way the comptroller handles it, sales taxes are at least generated to the city. So that's another way to kind of support what we're trying to do with city services and economic development.
And anything you order online, if it's from Amazon, or if it's from Walmart, or if it's from JCPenney's, and it's delivered to your home, and you live in the city of Santa Fe, we get the tax dollars from that.
Good thing.
Also, they're having a food drive at HI His Ministries.
Okay.
We appreciate that.
All right, so next one is number eight. Confirmed date for next regular business meeting scheduled for December 30th, 2025. How does that fit to everybody's schedules? Is that too close to the?
December 30th, that's fine. It's a Tuesday.
Is that too close to the 31st?
No.
Everybody okay with that?
I am.
All right. Unless I hear any objections, we'll go with the 30th then.
The only thing that I will make about that is, not that it's an issue, but just so that we're all on the same page, we have to post the agendas three business days in advance, not including the date that I posted the agenda and the date that the meeting is on. And so with the Christmas holiday and us being closed, that window's going to be bumped up a little bit, but it shouldn't be an issue actually having the meeting on the 30th.
Okay. All right, so you'll take care of the legality of getting it posted?
Yes, and I will let y'all know.
It's probably going to be posted a little bit earlier than it's supposed to be, but we have to do that because of the holiday. Christmas in, okay.
Yes.
Good deal. If not, I'll, we're at nine, I'll ask for an adjournment.
Summit.
Got a motion? Got a second? All those who approve say aye.
Aye.
It is adjourned.
What, wait, what, what was that here?
Here, I did mine.
Okay.
I'm going home.